Welcome to the town acting planning board meeting on December 30th at 6:00 PM. I'll stand for the pledge. Pledge of the pledge, to the land, the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank everybody for coming out tonight. Jason, you want to?
Yeah, so, I guess we called a special meeting to talk to the planning board about the possibilities of a moratorium, and if that's what the planning board wants to do, and if, let's see what our concerns are, see if, concerns that justify a moratorium, or if there's something that can just be done within our own conditions. About, the moratorium, I don't know if I stated it, is more or less for new and expanded extraction pits in the area. We've had a lot of concern, complaints, concern, I think they both go together, about the pits in the area that we have right now, and so it's coming, we have to start addressing them. What we need to do is take, gather all the information from the planning board of what these concerns are, then either if they want to move forward with the moratorium, or we can seek legal advice and see if these conditions, or the concerns that the planning board has meet a moratorium, or if they, they can be done within our own conditions, for conditional uses. So I guess it'd be more or less going around, stating our concerns, to see what happened, to see where we go with it. Bernard, do you have any more you want to say? Good.
Surprise, surprise.
I'd rather him, he's better with his words than I am.
Well, I think a couple of things are important. What I wanted to start off with is, in case anyone was wondering, you know, how did we just happen to be here tonight on the topic of a moratorium, where did that come from? And in terms of transparency to the public, it's important that you know that it's, that sometimes discussions do take place between planning board members and/or the code enforcement officer, and that is entirely lawful, as long as we don't do so in a quorum, or, you know, make decisions. And after the last regular planning board meeting, at which a number of members of the public voiced concerns about a variety of topics such as road traffic, large trucks, pollution, noise, and so forth, the chair and I did have a phone conversation about those concerns, and what can we possibly do as a planning board? And I suggested the possibility of a moratorium, and, you know, there may have been other discussions in addition to that, that I'm not aware of. But I do not, as a practice, have discussions about planning board business with other members of the planning board. Again, even though it's lawful, I just tend to not do that. But I think when those conversations take place, it's important that we then put it on the record and tell people that the conversation took place, so you understand and you have that transparency assurance. So, moratoria, the plural of moratorium, moratoria in Maine are governed by Title 13A, subsection 4356. And that states, "Any moratorium adopted by a municipality on the processing or issuance of development permits or licenses must meet the following requirements. Number one, necessity. The moratorium must be needed, A, to prevent a shortage or an overburden of public facilities that would otherwise occur during the effective period of the moratorium, or that is reasonably foreseeable as a result of any proposed or anticipated development." So you've got to have either a shortage or overburden of public facilities that would occur within the period of the moratorium, or that's otherwise foreseeable without it, or you can't go forward. Or, 1B, which I think is more applicable to why we're here, but that's not up to me to decide, but 1B reads, again, we're talking about necessity, "Because the application of existing comprehensive plans, land use ordinances, or regulations, or other applicable laws, if any, is inadequate to prevent serious public harm from residential, commercial, or industrial development in the geographic area." So, if we as a board wish to proceed with this, we need to issue findings of the serious public harm from the development that we believe could happen. The term, the period or term of a moratorium cannot be more than 180 days, however, under certain circumstances, the select board could then extend it for 180 more days. But I think probably what we need to just focus on, if we're going to do this, is whether we agree that the existing ordinances, comprehensive plans, regulations in Acton are inadequate to prevent serious public harm from the development within Acton. So I think that's all that I wanted to say, is kind of the backdrop.
We talked about, you know, just the road and the wear and tear on roads and stuff.
Right. I've been talking about updating the comprehensive plan for a long time. I feel it's really important to update it. We have people moving into town, more full-time residents than ever before. I think we're closer to 3,000, it used to be like 2,000. I think there are some holes that need to be filled in the ordinance, I mean, in the comprehensive plan, and the ordinances need to be updated. So I think that the town itself is at risk without doing that. And if we just continue the way that we are continuing, I don't think it's a good idea. I think we should just try to get the comprehensive plan in place before we keep giving out permits.
Pat, can you specify some serious public harms that you would be concerned about if the comprehensive plan were not updated before these developments occur?
Listening to the, to the public, water quality is a huge concern. There are so many lakes and water, water in Acton, it's like, I don't know, 2,000 acres or something, and we all live around it, you know, and it's, it could be compromised if we don't protect it. We have both seasonal residents and full-time residents. The seasonal residents and full-time residents enjoy the lakes, and I think if, you know, the water is a big concern.
Thanks. I think also we heard, I'm just going to talk about road damage and traffic. We heard from the public last week, concerns about a number of potentially serious areas that could, of public harm. From meetings I've attended, from my own experience driving around Acton, I am concerned about public safety as it relates to the traffic on the roads, particularly with large vehicles, dump trucks and so forth that are associated with this type of business. You know, there's the, there's a risk of serious public harm fiscally, and in terms of safety, in terms of the damage that large vehicles can do to roads, and if it's not repaired in a timely fashion. I have, on more than one occasion, like coming, going home from the transfer station, looked up and seen a large vehicle coming in the opposite direction, on my side of the road, in part. The roads are not marked well, they're not particularly wide, so I think there's, I'm concerned about the volume of traffic, large vehicles we already have in Acton, and I'm also concerned about the concentration of these types of businesses. You know, it would be one thing if we had large vehicles routinely going to areas that are 10 or 15 miles away from each other, but if they're in a concentrated area, I think the, the risk of public harm is increased collectively. So, that's, that's the public harm that I'll focus on. Thanks.
Anything you have?
Well, my, my biggest question is, what would we be able to get done, what would be the goal of getting done in this 180 days? I mean, I'm not sure how much, just having a moratorium on new permits for 180 days is going to overall affect the situation, or, I don't know how effective it would be, but I'd like to know what, what we think we can get done in that time that's going to make a difference. You were just talking about the roads, maybe we could, I don't know if we need a moratorium for this, but maybe if we had center lines painted on some of the roads in town, I know we've been through this before, but that might really help.
I've had, it was a proposal of one of the, of somebody that's planning on coming in, or conditional use was to, to strike the roads from, but that's just a proposal.
I think that would be, that would be helpful, I mean.
I don't know that the objective is necessarily to resolve all the problems within six months. In my view, ideally, within the six months, maybe there would be a change to, to our ordinances around zoning and so forth that could address these concerns, and go to a town meeting for a vote, and then if that didn't occur within six months, and the dangers were still present, then again, the select board can extend it. But yeah, within one year, the problem should be addressed through zoning changes, if that's going to occur. So it's not, it doesn't just go on forever, but conversely, it doesn't mean that we have to correct it within six months.
Do you have specific ideas of how you would change the existing zoning to benefit the town?
Personally, I, I think, you know, they, to go back to what I mentioned about road safety, maybe an idea about how many pits are within a certain radius, so that we can spread out the traffic, you know, of the large vehicles. Maybe there's going to have to be some kind of a fee associated with wanting to establish this type of business, that goes towards widening our roads, or, you know, placing lines on them, yeah, just to make it safer. I think that if a business is going to operate that involves heavy, heavy equipment like that, a large part of their business, that maybe they should be contributing more to the road maintenance and upkeep in Acton than the average taxpayer, would be some ideas, you know, off the top of my head.
So, since this all, the discussion of moratorium came about, coming back off from the Christmas break, the first thing I did pretty much was start contacting a number of different legal offices that we, that we use for land use for, for my department, and trying to find out what their ideas and thoughts were about a moratorium. So, one of the, so, one of the offices stated that, you know, some of the concerns are justifiable for a moratorium, but he feels that most of this can be accomplished just by the planning board use, you know, reviewing the conditions and making those conditions stick, and, as well as if the proposed extraction doesn't meet the conditions, you don't approve the permit, you just, you know, this, but he, his thing was, is, you know, you do have some concerns that do justify a moratorium, but he felt that most of these concerns could be addressed through our conditional use application. Another one was, stated pretty much the same, they were all the same, they all said that moratorium is definitely, was definitely justifiable, but he, you know, it's up to us, what we want to do, and, and the concerns, so that's why we're here kind of listing what the concerns are. Can the concerns be, be maintained through the conditional uses, or is the, the next best move, a moratorium? So, that's what it comes down to. So I just wanted to let you know that, what they had thought, you know, and I expressed most of the concerns that we've already stated right now, and our town attorney said that those could be met through the conditional uses. And you can, you know, make those conditions as strenuous as you want, in a sense, if that's, you know, I mean to say it like that, but.
The only thing with that, Jason, in my view, is we don't have the backup in the ordinance.
Right.
We start laying conditions that aren't, have the force of the ordinance behind it, we're at risk.
Right.
So I think in terms of the environmental concerns, which I wholeheartedly agree with, you know, we really don't have anything in, in page that we address mineral extraction for, for things like some of the studies I've seen other towns have required, that I think would be very beneficial. And if we were to just start laying that out, and it's not codified in the law, I think we'd have trouble backing it up.
I think we need the documentation. We need time to put it together.
I think that's why we, when we discussed it, you know, with the, I think that's what our thoughts were, was to, we need a little time to get a hold of it. They all seem to be concentrated in one area. That's the other issue, all between lakes and stuff.
That's where you're going to get your best flacial till.
No idea.
That's why they go there.
I do think that those, the concerns expressed last week by residents on these water bodies about noise pollution, about potential damage to the water that we don't know about, we don't know. But I think those are legitimate public safety concerns, and unfortunately, they're not necessarily reversible after we've done some of the damage. I don't, I don't really like the idea of using the conditional permit process for this, because I think it will lack uniformity.
Yeah.
I think it's different to have, have it be a zoning issue that is applied uniformly to everybody. If it's that we're supposed to somehow piecemeal a conditional permit for one party, but then because they have one, and somebody wants to do the same thing here, we're supposed to figure out how that increase is going to affect, you know, traffic and noise, and so we give them different rules than what we just gave someone else two weeks before? I, I don't really see that as the way to go.
This is, this is what the issue is, you hit the nail on the head. I've heard the applicants say, "Well, it's not, it's not, it's not written in here, and there's nothing that says I can't."
Right. And I don't feel as a planning board member, that if it's an allowed use, that whether I like it or I don't like it, that I'm in a position to just say, "Well, you know, I really don't like that type of business, so we, we're not going to do that here." If the citizens of Acton by majority say, "That's not what we want," or "These are the conditions we want it under," that's different than a planning board doing it, in my view.
I think the ordinances protect everybody. Both sides.
So I guess if that's the view of the board, then the question is whether you feel it rises to the level of immediacy that we should put this out to the voters, the issue of a moratorium, versus waiting until we can reconstruct an ordinance and put that out for vote. Either one will have to be approved by the voters.
What's in the queue?
What do you mean?
Are there?
That can't be a consideration for this.
But it is worth pointing out that most of the pits that are active now are going to be active through the full moratorium, it's only affecting, it's going to affect expansions. It's only going to affect a few individuals, probably. We don't get that many new applications. Each year, we usually have change of conditional use, which, are you proposing we'd limit a change in conditional use as well during the moratorium? I would think so, I mean, it's a permit. But, I mean, perhaps we need to start reviewing the conditional uses, some of them have been out there for a decade, and, and they haven't been looked at. I do know that over the years, we have tried to keep, you know, as you go through the performance standards, we try to keep them pretty similar, but you do have some pits that are 30-plus acres, and you have some that's an acre. So the, the scale really does play into the performance standards. You know, it's hard to just have one overarching regulation for a small, tiny operator, and a big one too, so that, you know, the, the conditional use does allow that variation. So I, I'm just not sure how, you know, what, going through the moratorium process and just having a special town meeting, I don't know what, what exactly is going to be the outcome, whereas we could just hunker down with the materials and, and try to figure out where we want to change the ordinance. We do have quite a bit of leeway in the ordinance to ask for revegetation of different types. We rely largely on the state standards, DEP standards, to be our base, which is, you know, the applicant's familiar with those. But, yeah, I'm just not sure of the, all the benefits of doing it. You know, I, I do, I do feel like there are things we can change, but it's just the way to do it. In the next, next six months, we, we don't have anything prepared for this coming town meeting, so it's really, you know, 2024 town meeting we're talking about for the zoning ordinance changes. You know, we have, I mean, unless we have a special town meeting to address the changes, what might be a better use of our call than a moratorium? I, I don't know. We still have a couple more members who haven't said much, I think we should keep pontificating on it, but I'm, I'm just not, I'm, we need to figure out what our goals are. Other than safer roads and, and safer protection for the, for water quality.
Do you see a problem with, just hypothetical example, a neighborhood having a gravel pit in it?
That's just the, the nature of Acton, is that
Exactly.
We have a lot, all our uses are mixed, I mean, you do sympathize with someone who builds a house, and then a year later, there's a, someone buys the lot next door and starts digging, but.
When your property value depreciates by 19% through backwood, say your house $350, that's $7,000 that you lose on the property that you bought?
Some people might prefer that, they have to pay less in taxes.
Well, that's true too, but.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know, I mean.
Glass half-full.
But it's, it's the same thing, you think about, you know, we have a, our town is a resource-based, you know, resource extraction is part of the economics of the town, just like timber harvesting, and they come in next door, and, you know, all of a sudden you have a view, and the, the wind is twice as much as it was before. I mean, that's, that's another aspect of Acton.
I don't think anybody's against gravel pits, but Gavin.
No, I think we're just trying to get a handle on it.
I, yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to.
I think it's time to align what we have to work with, give us a better base to stand on when we have to review these things.
And most of them are on just this road, that's, you know, how much people, how much we do.
Well, all, yeah, all the, all the glacial deposits are in a similar area in north end of town, and there's not much we can do about that, that's just the nature, just like, you know, all the stands of timber in this part of the town, I mean, that's, you know.
We got graveyards now on the other side of the road, but.
And I'm not trying to defend the gravel pits, I'm just trying to, I want to make sure what we do makes sense, because.
And everybody's going to make money, that's the thing, I get it, you know, but it just seems to be, you know, even in the summertime, if you've seen the lines, I'm sure that the truck comes whooping down around the corner, it's gonna, it's gonna be bad news. It's, you know, you got dust pollution, noise pollution.
That is something that I saw in this ordinance, that was pointed out a couple times, was dust, I wouldn't mind seeing something more substantial about wind, wind erosion, but.
So you don't, you don't disagree that there are things that have to be worked on?
No, I mean, I.
So, why not? Why don't we?
No, I think it's a good idea, I'm just not sure
Worked on it?
That, that we need a moratorium in order to do that.
I think that it's protecting, it's being proactive for what could potentially happen. I think that's more of what, what they're talking about with a moratorium. Not what is right now, but what could potentially happen.
Right.
If we don't have something else in place.
I think I'd like to, what I'd like to do is, I don't, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but instead of voting on it tonight, maybe, so if we do get, I do write all the concerns down, I can talk to somebody, I'll talk to the legal, and find out if all these can be met within our conditions, you know, I'm kind of, I'm not sure, I support you guys no matter what you guys want to do, but I don't know, because what I've had discussion was if the moratorium is needed, but that is, that's in your ball court, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, we don't do the extreme when we don't need to, I guess, because the, the ordinance is, it covers some spots and it's vague, and it's vague, it's left there for us to, to use our conditional uses, and set those conditions, because if it, if it wouldn't set it in there on us, then we have to, in a sense, follow those more or less, whereas if they leave it vague for us to do the review process, set our conditions, what we want on that, and our, and have us do, or these people do their research and due diligence on their part, and, you know, if we request certain stuff, then they have to do it, so that we can meet, they can meet our standards, so.
Maybe we should pull the door with this and then do the, then?
I think if, I think that would be something that would be.
I think if, I think that would be something that would be, be definitely for the thing that, these older, these pits that have been in existence for a while should come back for review, that's definite. I think I would like to get everybody on the same type of conditions, you know, in a sense, you know, I don't, I, right now, I have, you know, a handful of pits, and everybody has different conditions, different start times, you know. I'm just chasing my tail, trying to figure out which pit's doing what, and, you know, I get numerous complaints on them, and I gotta go, go through this file that's about six inches deep, trying to find their conditions, and what was said at that planning board meeting, and all this other stuff. So it would be nice to get all these pits playing in the same ballpark, because right now, they're, everybody's in the nosebleeds. I don't even know where to go with them. So, yeah, I would like to, I would like to have older pits, the pits that have been existing, come in for, you know, five, every five years or something like that, come in and do some kind of review, you know, I don't know, but...
That's kind of what you were saying, right, in a way?
Yeah, similar, yeah.
I mean, not everything can be foreseen to where we can write it down, and we know what's going to go on. These concerns that come up in the public have to be able to adjust. We don't know, we didn't know, or didn't, you know, that we would have this problem with the roads. We didn't know what damage these trucks would do. We didn't know what concerns the citizens have at the time. So I'm in agreement with the fact that we've got to reevaluate, look at things, you've got to continuously evaluate or reevaluate as different things come up, because you can't foresee everything. So we try to foresee as much as we can to reduce any damage, permanent or otherwise, but, you know, having the overall plan in place is a good place to start, you know, it's something that needs to be done, particularly for things just like this. So, you know, we have an old saying in the military, you know, you adjust fire as the situation changes. Conditions change, times change, materials change, trucks change, everything changes. So we need that latitude to be able to adjust. And like you were saying, a review, updating would be a continuous thing anyway. And a one-size-fits-all doesn't work, in my opinion. It can. Soil conditions are different. This is different. Heights, I mean, I'm looking at the topographical map of where this system, things sit, what drains where, everything is different, so it can't be a one-size-fits-all, in my opinion. You kind of have to adjust for that particular project. What concerns do we have of that particular project that might be, you know, that we have to address would be part of the conditions that we would establish? But as far as the long-term plan for Acton, like I said, what needs to get done, you know, because where do you want to go with Acton? Where do we want to be? What concerns do the citizens have? We're looking at more growth, higher use of our roads. Roads need to be wider, trucks are getting bigger. I mean, lines down the middle, we should have all that stuff. And like I said, there's a cost involved, how do we offset that cost? All these things, I think, you know, we have to consider. So maybe it is time to tap the brakes and, you know, take up the issues we have directly in front of us right now, and work on the others later, but just in my opinion, it never hurts to tap the brakes, take another look, make sure we're doing this in accordance to what the people of the town want, and what's best for everybody all around, including businesses, you know. Everybody's trying to make a living here, and all the people who live here, so I'm all in favor of tapping the brakes, just so we can get our heads wrapped around where we want to go with all this.
I, yeah, I think it's important to realize that this, the moratorium would not affect existing businesses. That's not what we're trying to do. I think tapping the brakes is a good analogy in terms of expanding what's already done in Acton. You know, if, if we were talking about clearing land, for example, and we were concerned that Acton's being clear cut, and so there was a moratorium on expanding or new businesses that want to clear cut land, that's, that's kind of what we're talking about. We're not saying, oh, so anyone that does, you know, lumbering needs to stop. That's, that's not it at all. It's looking at what the future holds if we do more of the same. So I feel like I've experienced enough on the roadways myself, I've heard enough about the roadways, I've heard enough from citizens concerned about the noise and air and water quality where they live, proximate to these types of operations, that I am ready to make a motion on a moratorium, and that's what I'd like to do. And then if, you know, if it doesn't carry, it doesn't carry. We actually, the planning board can, if a majority of the planning board votes to put a moratorium forward to the voters, we can do that. That is not what I'm going to move. I am going to move that we request that the select board consider that. And the select board, I believe, is waiting for the planning board's opinion on that issue, that they don't plan to go forward with the moratorium unless the majority of this board has approved that. I think that's what was stated at the last meeting. Our town administrator wants to speak.
So, yeah, just for clarification, so the board of selectmen are looking for the support of the planning board, that that's something you want to move forward, but the board of selectmen would be expecting the planning board, you know, between the conjunction and certainly the town administrator and the vote officer, to draft that moratorium, and that will be back in your hands to vote on. But if the ordinance is written, Bernard's right, you guys would be moving forward, the board of selectmen are scheduling a special town meeting and getting organized.
Thank you. Okay, so I will reverse what I just said. I, I move that the planning board put forth a moratorium, put forth to the voters, which would have to be, go through the select board, the warrant. So I move that the planning board put forth or move forward on a moratorium on the establishment or operation of new facilities or expansion of existing facilities involving removal, processing, and storage of topsoil, loam, rock, flat rock, sand, gravel, or other similar materials, including metallic minerals. That's my motion.
One second.
There's some conversation. I do feel like we should have something in there that talks about how many yards of material. I'm not, I don't want to limit somebody who wants to put up a garage, and they have to...
Well, you're still allowed 1,000 yards, like...
Well, I just feel like, we, I mean, we'd want to be specific to the scale of the operation that we were targeting.
Would the word "commercial" suffice for you, or not?
Well, I don't, I mean, once again, I just don't want to, you know, somebody wanted to put in a IGA, I mean, that's a commercial building, and they have to move a certain amount of material to do that. Often, they truck it out, they truck it in, they, so I just want to be careful with the verbiage, that we're not, you know, limiting somebody who, who isn't really, I mean, I think we should put the terms mineral extractive industry in the...
Right, I agree.
In there, because that's how we classify it in the zoning ordinance. Of course, I mean, I still, I'm still not sure, I feel like it's necessary to have a moratorium, but that's beside the point. I mean, I'd want the verbiage to be right. I would want to make it as simple as possible, just, you know, do you, you say something like, do you, I know we have a vote, a second, so we're, but I'd want, you know, do you, you know, do you, the voter, favor ceasing the issuance of permits for mineral extraction in the county of Acton for a term of 180 days or something? I'd want it to be pretty simple.
Well, if, if you guys decide that you want to go forward with the moratorium, then we'll have a lawyer, a land use attorney draw it up. It's, it's, you just tell me what you want them to, to put in it, and...
Oh, I thought we had to come up with the verbiage.
No, well, we'll work on it.
Eventually, so, yeah. Actually, why don't I, why don't I...
So the, the idea is that you guys first are going to, the board wants to know that overall you support the idea of a moratorium, and that you were tonight, if you've agreed that you supported it, you were then listing out the things that you wanted to see in it, and then Jason and I would take all that information and get a draft moratorium written for you. And our attorney is completely agreed, shorter, short and sweet, get right to it, but you don't have to work out all those details tonight. It's figuring out if you want one, and what the most important things you wanted to see, put a temporary vote on, and then we'll put the verbiage together and bring it back to you, and then go through and make any changes to.
All right, so why don't, should I withdraw my motion and then restate a new one?
If you'd like, yes.
All right, so that's what I'm going to do.
We've had a second, can we withdraw if we've had a second? I think we got to vote, I mean...
And vote it down.
I would suggest voting it down.
Yep, okay.
I mean...
Yep, fine, whatever we have to do.
All in favor of voting his motion down?
No, just all in favor of the motion.
All in favor of the motion? Or not? Opposed to the motion?
Okay, okay. So I move that we take the necessary steps to establish a moratorium on the establishment and operation or expansion of existing gravel pits or mineral, and mineral, and/or mineral extraction facilities in Acton. It's dealing with gravel pits and mineral extraction.
And you said just existing, existing and new, or just existing?
Well, the reason I'm saying existing is the expansion, because if, for example...
I understand that, but you didn't say and new. So I wasn't sure if we were separating them.
What I thought I said was a moratorium on the establishment and operation of new facilities or expansion of existing ones relating to gravel pits and/or mineral extraction.
Second.
Just a second.
All in favor? All opposed?
I didn't vote yet.
You gotta be clear.
I, I, I think we need to be, I'm okay with this, and I'll vote for that, but I think we need to be clear-eyed, to go back to what Gavin said, what's the end game here? Okay, we can put in, we can recommend this and see if the town will vote for it, but at the end of the day, this needs to change. That's what we have to do, so...
That is what we're talking about, but it's the immediacy of it.
I'm just saying, let's be, let's be clear-eyed about that. So we can put this in, but then we've got to get this changed, to address the roads, to address the environmental impacts.
Yes.
That's the hard...
And do a comprehensive plan.
Yep.
We've already discussed adding more meetings.
It won't be in the comprehensive plan in six months, it's got to be this. Comprehensive plans, two years away.
We do have some help.
You know, why?
We don't have to reinvent the wheel to get this done. We have some good documentation that would help us in this one particular area.
I'm just agreeing. I'll vote, all right.
I just thought we needed to be clear-eyed about it.
Two, three, four, two, Gavin opposed?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to abstain, because I, that doesn't really make sense, I guess, so I'm opposed, but I'm not opposed to working on the zoning ordinance and try to, you know, remediate some of the impacts, just with the moratorium.
Jason, he wants to come up and say, fine, free.
You're running the meeting.
If you want to come up and flip it on the...
It's really not a public meeting, but that's...
Mine operators, huh? So I figure the chairman wants to, I'd like to say to him.
It's up to you.
Yeah, so if you put a moratorium for 180 days for expansion, and if I have to strip off more land to keep mining to run my business, I'm not going to be able to...
It's a conditional use expansion, not what you already have going on.
Okay.
Yeah, you're already, you're, you're fine.
And one other thing, did anybody ever get together with the mine operators to talk to them about some of the concerns the town has? Maybe we can pull us all in together, maybe we can work this out and talk, because there's other mine operators here today, and there's a bunch more. Maybe we can bring everybody in and get some common ground.
That's a good idea.
We wouldn't be opposed to that, I think.
I think it's a, it's a good idea, I mean, because we have pretty strict rules that we have to follow, start times, end times, stuff along those lines, you know, and I think it would be fair for everybody to have those same guidelines that they follow.
I'd be interested to hear what you guys have to say. It's not, we're not trying to hurt anybody financially, trust us on that one, I mean...
I mean, we have millions of dollars invested in properties that we have here, and, you know, we love this town just as much, you know, we're here working it every day, you know, so if they have concerns about water or something like that, it's bring all those mine operators in and talk about it. Maybe we can come to some kind of common ground, you know?
Yeah, it will.
Yeah. And I agree, that's an objective, and that's important, but it still needs to be codified, because if it isn't, and you have one mine operator that is not as community-minded as you, then that doesn't help their neighbors. It really has to be codified in an ordinance, I think. But can we work together to make that work as well as possible for everyone? Absolutely. Yep.
That's what we're here for.
Yeah, were we going to discuss any of the other proposed changes to the zoning ordinance tonight?
Do whatever you want, that's all we have here.
I would love to, if everyone, I don't know what people's feelings like.
No, that's fine. I can, I'm going to go down to my office, I think I had received an email just before this meeting from North Star about some of their, what they have, if you guys wanted to review those, too, or you want to just work on what we have. And we can, they're going to, I have them coming next Thursday. They're on, they're planning on coming to review what they have, so that we can let them know what we think about, and if they need to make any minor adjustments or complete adjustments to it.
Yeah, I'd like a copy tonight, just gives me more time to look at it for the next meeting even, and then...
Yeah.
Fine, can I say anything?
Yeah, that's fine.
I agree with, I think it's Mike, agree with what Mike said, you know, I'd be happy to work with the town and talk things over and come to agreement. One thing that, I don't know how much you guys know of mineral extraction, with laws of the state domain and whatnot, but we're all governed by DEP standards, and they do monitor, you know, what we do every year, and there's definitely many, many laws that, you know, protect, you know, setbacks on wetlands and, and water areas, so it's just something to keep in mind as well, and...
I mean, you guys have to have your fair say.
Yeah.
And we have to listen to you, but we also have to listen to the public, and they have their fair say.
No, I, yeah, I completely understand, you know, the traffic... Nope, I, yeah, I completely understand, you know, the traffic and whatnot is, you know, that's definitely an issue, that's everywhere. But just one, like, major concern that I have is I, you know, bought an existing pit in town, you know, with land that abutted it, you know, it's a joint thing. You know, under, you know, looking at the guidelines of what you guys had for mineral extraction at the time, you know, I made an investment. You know, now I'm having an engineer put everything together for me. So, once I get to the point where I'm ready to turn in an application, I mean, it's, I hope everything doesn't completely change where, you know, I spent this money on this, this property, you know, under the laws that there were at the time, were there was at the time, you know, I'm gonna say, well, now you can't do this. You know, so that's, that's a major concern that I have. So, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm gonna go around later.
I don't have the folders from the last meeting, because stuff was in those, but I think there were three, maybe we can ask them to bring them up.
Right, I've got the three pieces of paper, a few...
Okay, all gave out the...
Crapped in.
Yeah, okay.
I've got those.
So, so there was, what I looked into was the necessity, the possibility of a necessity for a marijuana moratorium or ordinance, and my read of the law is that we don't need to do anything on that issue, because Maine has an opt-in process for that. So, unless and until the residents of Acton voted that they wanted retail marijuana establishments in Acton, that won't happen. So, I don't believe we have to do anything on that. That's just my opinion. If you read what I cited and you agree, then we can let go of that one. The second one was the issue of tiny houses that, as far as I'm concerned, state law governs, so it's just a matter of proposing an ordinance change to bring our ordinance in conformity with state law, which is that we have to treat tiny homes as any other structure. If the lot qualifies to be built on, then we have to allow a tiny house, the same as any other type of house. Again, that's my read of the law. If you agree with what I said, what I cited, then I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on that, other than there needs to, you know, there needs to be a warrant put forward to the voters to bring it into conformity with state law. I think if they don't approve it, we still have to approve any applications to put a tiny house on a lot. So, if you...
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think there's some, some discussion to be had about the tiny houses. I thought I placed it in the land use chart, because we have to do that. So, I'm on page 14. I was just gonna put it right in next to accessory dwelling unit.
The B.
Yeah, Gavin, can you read what I had proposed on that? Because I think it included amending...
Well, we can, is Jason getting these too, or?
I don't think so, because I, I didn't mention...
Yeah, yeah. Does anyone else have?
I, I've got it. Yeah, you, you included the definition, Bernie, so the definition's there, but I think we do need to address the location where they can be put. And part of the deal was you can, on an individual house lot, they're okay as an accessory building. That was part of the deal, it has to be written in. So, either in where you're talking about, Gavin, or maybe the line below it, create a new line below it.
Exactly, I was just gonna copy what we have for accessory dwelling unit, which makes it CEO review for every zone except it's not permitted resource protection shoreline or a little osseology.
Is anybody thinking about the septic system that goes with that tiny house? Do they tie into the existing septic system, and is that an additional bedroom? Or how does that work? Because how's, the design, systems are designed as bedrooms.
Right, right.
So, it might be overloading the system.
If they're using the existing, yeah, they, they could be, but that's part of the application process.
But would, would we allow that to tie into an existing system?
I think it's situation dependent. If the existing system was, it handled it per the main standards.
Usually you get your permit with the house, and that house is built to, the system is built to the size of the house.
Right.
So, it's not likely that you'd be able to tie in a tiny house to that system.
Isn't that a code requirement? But if you, if you didn't tie it in, you put a separate septic, it's almost like you're putting two dwellings on one lot, which may not even be, I mean, it might be big enough to be divided into two lots, but that wasn't, that's not the intent. When we put in the accessory dwelling unit, if you, if you probably look at the verbiage, because it's supposed to be attached to the main unit, you know, we're not looking to allow people to put two houses on one lot by allowing tiny houses. And if they have two septics, then we're, we're kind of knocking on that door.
Well, I think if the land is big enough to accommodate another system, it's either or. If, if they can't, if they can't tie into the system that's existing, that's not big enough, then they would have to have a separate system. You know, I'm thinking around the place again, what happens when you have, you know, multiple people using a system?
Wouldn't they have to go through the application process of putting in a separate septic? So, that's all covered under codes anyway, right?
Right, but you would be allowing them to tie into a system.
If, if it met...
If it met that requirement.
If it met code, which is...
I think there has to be some kind of language that protects that.
Well, I'm not sure if this does or not. The, the definition of accessory use or structure states a use or structure of a nature customarily incidental and subordinate to those of the principal use or structure. So, if you already have a house on the lot, it seems to me putting another house on the lot is not incidental or subordinate to the other one. And then it goes on to say accessory uses when aggregated shall not subordinate the principal use of the lot. So, if you were putting multiple, you know, if you're putting other structures on that make the principal house or structure subordinate to that, that doesn't work. If you add a deck or a garage to the principal structure and it has a common wall, then it's considered part of the structure, so it's not a separate structure. So, I, I think that that addresses what you're concerned about.
Well, they're, these are on wheels.
Well, some are, some aren't. Some are actually...
I thought the definition said they had to be movable.
Well, as soon as you hook it up to the septic, it's not really movable anymore.
Well, it's temporary.
It becomes, then it becomes a permanent structure, and then we enter this whole, a whole nother realm of...
So, what do we do?
Well, it's like buying a shed and then fixing it up to be occupied is a tiny house. You know, you can go buy a third, 20 by 20 shed and convert it and make it a tiny house. You're allowed to put the shed there, but once you convert it to a tiny house, that's basically all these things are. And then you hook it up to a septic system, wouldn't it be covered under the codes when they apply for use, you know, it would be up to site inspection saying, okay, you're only authorized, and this is all documented, this is already on paper, as to how big your septic system is according to your house, that's already there. That would be determined at the time of the application whether or not you could hook up to that septic system, or you'd have to have a separate one. Then you have to apply for that septic system. That falls under the codes as to whether or not you can have that septic system. So, I think we're kind of beating it, beating it to death when it's already in the codes. Yeah, I, I think you're right. I mean, the, the definition that Bernie copied out from the regulation says it's a living space and has to comply with the codes. I mean, subpart A in the definition's got to comply with the codes. So, if this septic system, the existing septic system only accepts one bathroom, you can't hook up a second bathroom from a tiny house without expanding your septic. Then they'd have to put in a request for a permit to do that anyway. And then that permit, they'd have to meet the requirements of two bathrooms in order to, so it's all covered in the process of applying for, I guess our only real concern is, you know, do we allow tiny houses to be on like a second structure? Like I said, I can go out and buy a shed, and I can insulate it, and I could plummet, and put electricity in it, I can live in it. That's a tiny house.
And people aren't doing that, right?
That's a tiny house.
Right.
You know, so, yeah.
But it's, it's one thing if you do that on your lot and you don't, and you don't have a primary structure. When you're doing that on your lot and you do have a primary structure, you're creating a second residence, and we just, you know, we want to think that out and...
Which you're supposed to have a permit to do.
Right.
And then you, I mean, it comes down to lot size, too.
I mean, you're requiring everyone who has a tiny house, because they're, they're trying to save some money, they don't want to live in the main house with their family, they're, build the tiny house, you're requiring them, they have up to code plumbing and everything in there? I mean, that...
Yeah, a tiny house is a tiny house. It has to meet all plumbing, electrical, all the codes have to be met.
The, the regulation...
I don't want to make it a big deal. The regulation goes on to say beyond the definition, it talks about the location, and the regulation goes on to say, it's to permit tiny houses to be placed or erected on individual house lots where single-family dwellings are allowed, or as accessory structures subject to all applicable land use requirements as single-family dwellings or as accessory dwelling. So, I think that supports what you're saying. So, it's already...
It's saying you can have one, but it's got to comply with all the codes.
It's still got to meet all the codes.
Codes.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to put electricity to it, you got to get a permit. You want to plummet into an existing or whatever septic, you got to have a permit. So, it's all going to be taken care of, permit-wise and code-wise.
So, one of the things I'm thinking about is addressing the need for affordable housing. Are you gonna have young people in it or retired peoples, um, in family that are going to go?
Excuse me.
Particularly looking for these places.
Like a mother-in-law house.
Right, is it something that we want to think, I'm just gonna throw this out there.
I don't want my mother...
You know, you mentioned lot size.
Yeah.
And for a house around town, most places it's two acres. Do we want to look at, maybe this isn't the time to throw that out there, but I think it's something that we need to think about, reducing the lot size for a tiny house, maybe in a particular zone.
Would they request a variance from additional building?
They can request one. The zoning, they usually don't do...
Has to be a hardship.
It has to be a hardship, yeah.
Has to be a real hardship, and that's not improved. Would have to be a zoning change. Just a thought.
Yeah, you're right. Because if there is a specific size a house lot has to be, and you're trying to put a second basic house on the same lot, you know, then you're not meeting the standard of only two acres, one house per two acres.
Right, that's what I was...
It's a house, yeah. That's, that's, the stipulation here is this is a house, not a shed, not an outbuilding, it's a house. It's livable, it's plumbed, it's electrical.
But if you have three acres, just let's say, you had three acres, under the current ordinance, you can't, you need two acres to build something else.
So, you need two acres to put a house on, but if it's a tiny house, you only need one acre.
Maybe, if it's attached, if it's, it's just a thought.
It's only half the size, so you only need half the room.
You know, we have a whole lot of worms, but it's a practical application.
But am I right in assuming that most everything they do to it, like hooking up to an existing septic and all that, has to be cleared, has to meet code standards?
Oh, definitely.
And all those applications have to go in for it. So, our, probably our biggest thing is just, like you said, the zone. If we only required each house has to have at least two acres in this zone, and they want to put a third, second house on the same lot is what we're looking at, because it is a second house, and now it's no longer meets the criteria of one house per two acres, right?
Right.
So, that would be our concern, right, when it comes to tiny houses? Not so much codes and everything else, because I think that's covered, but this is a house. If it is identified as a tiny house, it must meet all the code requirements, ordinance requirements as to space and everything else. So, basically, if two acres is required for a house, two acres is required for a tiny house. It's still a house, tiny or big.
Yeah, I don't feel like going to change the zoning. We have more zones than most towns in the state of Maine right now.
That's what I mean. I think the, the area we're looking at there is that zoning.
Yeah, I think two acres is fine.
Yeah, I mean...
Four, five, whatever it is, if, if they choose to put a house in that certain spot, then...
No, I'm not saying...
Make it abide by what the zoning that we have right now.
But how do we make, you know, allowances? If you already got a house in a two-acre lot, everything's within specs and code and everything else, they want to put a tiny house on it, how do we go about?
I'm not sure that it allows for that.
Right, I don't think it would.
That, if you're, there's already a house there, then I think you're into accessory use or structure, and I don't think another house qualifies as that.
That's what I think our dilemma is.
So, why is that a dilemma?
Well, it seems like it.
Well, how are you gonna allow?
This, this would...
I don't think you are.
If it's more like a...
They'd have to buy a two-acre lot.
But the state says we have to.
No, what the state says is if you have zoning that affects a single-family home, that you have to allow a small, a tiny house, the same as you would somebody that wants to build a three-bedroom ranch.
Well, that makes sense.
That's what that means.
And that's it.
And so, I don't think that, that presently, if you have the necessary size parcel to build a single-family house, that, that means you can build two houses on your lot, right?
Okay. I'm just getting clarification. Well, that makes sense, because if I got a two-acre lot, I'm allowed a house on two acres, it can be a tiny one or a big one.
That's right, right.
And that's all it is.
They're trying to, I think what they're trying to do is make it so that municipalities can't say you have to build a standard-sized house. You can't have a tiny house. We don't want tiny houses in our neighborhoods, like in Portland, for example. You know, somebody might say, well, you know, I live on the western prom, and I don't want somebody to be able to buy that spare lot and put a tiny house on it. But this says they can.
Yeah, I, well, I can see where that'd be a concern when your lots are measured in square foot and not acreage. You know, that, you got a nice mansion over here, a nice two, three-bedroom house, and somebody plucks a little...
Yeah.
Tiny house next door to you.
Yep, well, that's the way it is now. I mean, there's nothing, that's the state law, so...
So, there's really nothing in there we need to do, right?
We just have to...
A house is a house is a house, yeah?
So, we're on addressing COVID displaced a lot of people. Are there any places in town where you can think of where there might be a tiny house right now?
I believe I've seen one on 35th Street, off of Tattle.
There was one on our road, but it got moved.
They do move, so this is what this regulation is about.
I, I think it's more of a modern-day motor, um, motorhome, whatever, not motorhome, um, trailer.
Yeah.
Tiny home...
Wheels, some are...
Right. As, as defined by this new law, tiny home means a living space permanently... Right. As, as defined by this new law, tiny home means a living space permanently constructed on a frame or chassis and designed for use as permanent living quarters. And then it has to comply with certain national standards around plumbing and fire safety and all that. It can't be more than 400 feet in size, can't exceed the dimension allowed for operation on a public way, and is a vehicle without motive power. Tiny home does not include a trailer, semi-trailer, camp trailer, recreational vehicle, or manufactured housing.
Jason, do we allow, um, composting toilets anywhere?
Composting toilets?
That's what most tiny houses have.
They don't want to hook up to a septic?
They have composting toilets.
Self-composting. Big in Sweden, right? I think that's where they started.
Yeah, you can just do it with a bucket. A lot of people just take a bucket.
Well...
It's a little bit deep in there and, um...
I would guess that doesn't comply with the American national standards that are in the law on plumbing, propane, fire, and life safety in construction. I don't know.
It's, it's something to think about because it will come up.
If you wanted to have a composting toilet, you should look up other towns that have accepted variances for it and you come up with your nutrient management plan, what, you know, they put different types of baby's weed mushrooms, help compost it. What your plan is.
Gavin, do you have a composting toilet at your house?
No, I don't. But that is, that is, and then you would take that information to apply for variance in this town. And, you know, as long as your system was...
Functioning.
Yeah, and it, and it was accepted somewhere, then that would be, you could do that. But it still wouldn't help them get out of these other, um, you know, plumbing, propane, everything, you know, everything else would still have to be, right, up to code. But I, I feel like these tiny houses, it's, you know, if we make it so it's just pretty much a house, then it's not, not a lot cheaper for somebody to build one than, you know, because the, like you're saying, the septic, the plumbing, the well, those are all huge costs too. But some tiny houses, if they were, it was more like an accessory dwelling unit, um, wouldn't eat those things necessarily, but that's not what we're talking about.
As an accessory dwelling.
Well, we have, yeah, I mean, we have, already have additional dwelling units. It's on page Everybody see a 5.1, 4.1, 1.1?
Yeah.
We just put that in probably five years ago.
Accessory dwelling.
So you have to meet the subsurface rules.
Yeah, but it's likely that, that this would, that it would be hoped to be the same septic as the existing house.
Providing the septic system meets code requirements for two toilets instead of one.
Yeah, I mean, it's just one more bedroom.
Yeah, it goes by bedrooms, not by toilets, by bathrooms.
It's just one more bedroom, so I think most houses would be able to come in.
It would still be, still be a code controlled...
I believe every new, anything is considered two-bedroom no matter what, state regulations. It's not, you can't have a one-bedroom. It's, your system has to be designed for two, right, by state regulations. Before we adjourn tonight, we just, I just want to make sure I have a good list of, because I got to write up this proposed moratorium, so I got to make sure that I have everything that you guys want on here. I know you guys started working on this thing, so before we leave, I got to make sure I have a, a good list of things that we got going on here. Unless you guys want to come and write this tomorrow.
Only one accessory building, tiny house.
Okay, so shift gears.
Well, we can go back, we can do this, but I'm just saying before we leave, I got to just, I got to make sure I have my notes down here pretty good. So keep on going on your tiny houses.
I mean, according to this, tiny house is allowed, provided it meets all code requirements for underground water disposal, so...
It's a premature regular house.
Yeah, it's, a tiny house is going to come into the zone, the ordinance, just like a regular house. There should be nothing different about it.
It says accessory dwelling unit, which is tiny house.
Yeah, I think that's the key question. I think that's what people, I could anticipate that coming.
Now we're back to what it was a long time ago.
That people wouldn't like their tiny house to be an accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
But how can we accommodate that?
Right.
Well, their law has to accommodate them on a normal lot, sure, but if they want to be like an accessory, how can we shape our verbiage to allow that without creating two residences on one lot?
I don't know if it's passed yet or not, but it was, it was, went to the legislature and it was going to be that all lot, all house, all lots were going to be allowed accessory dwellings, you know, something like that. If, that's if the, um, the town adopted their ordinance that.
Yeah, I mean, I doubt that the town would adopt that.
Right. Because then they get, every person on the lake will have two, two houses on, on one lot and, and anyway, but, um, but even additional dwelling units, multifamily units, their lot size still has to accommodate it. You can't just say, hey, I'm putting up a, uh, an ADU on, on my, in my house or on my property. You still have to come in and your lot, they still have to meet special regulations and that's for my office, you know, I go through that and figure out if it, if it works for them or not.
What are we thinking of putting?
Oh, where am I thinking about putting the verbiage?
Yeah.
On, probably on page 66.
No, I, early in reading here, you said...
Oh, in the, uh, in the land use chart?
Yeah.
Probably right below them. Under residential structures and uses, for maybe, I don't know, yeah, we'd have to change.
Why wouldn't you just, why wouldn't you just add it, uh, we'll put it after J so you're not, you're not striking things and shifting things up and down. Why wouldn't you just add another one?
Well, I mean, it might just be considered a single-family dwelling.
Actually, it is according to...
Depending on how we shape it into the, you know, we may not really even...
Well, according to your additional dwelling units, within an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling shall be permitted. They call it a single-family dwelling as well.
That's because it's attached, that's attached to the...
It's like an in-law apartment.
It's like above the garage kind of thing. Everything's attached.
Or in the basement or, or whatever.
Yeah.
And number nine addresses the lot size. We go to page 19 because on the two single-family residence dwellings on one lot, it's R9 for most of the boxes. It's not allowed in resource, shoreline, or littler lots of each district, but the other ones have R9. If you look at nine, it addresses the lot size, 350 feet of frontage, 200,000 square feet.
So it could be that a tiny house is considered a multi, no, not a...
Only if it's on another, it's being used in accessory dwelling. It would fall under something like that.
I think that that's to the definition than, than accessory building because there are two separate residences.
So if we just took, did not include the verbiage that we were amending the definition of dwelling unit accessory, would that take care of this?
Well, you got accessory dwelling unit under 272 residential structures and uses.
What was that, Bernie?
Okay, what I wrote was, do you favor amending Article 3, Construction Language, Section 3.2 definitions of the zoning ordinance for Actin to include tiny home as defined by statute in Maine in the definitions of dwelling, dwelling unit residential, and dwelling unit accessory? So if we took out dwelling unit accessory, so we weren't changing the definition of dwelling unit accessory, would that take care of people's concerns?
Yeah.
Because then it means it's not, I don't think we're required by law to allow a tiny home to be an accessory use.
Well, it could be used as somebody's primary use too, correct?
Well, yes, it would be their primary use if they bought a house lot and they want to put a tiny house on it, which we have to allow.
And if, that's if you want it in all zonings.
And then maybe if they arguably, if they wanted to do a multi-unit, they might be able to do that with, you know, a, uh, traditional structure and a tiny house, they might be able to do that on a multi-unit. But they could not, it's not an incidental use, so it's not an accessory. And the reason dwelling unit accessory is in there was because I thought I needed to put it into any definition involving dwelling and I think that I was wrong because it's not, as an accessory use, it's not incidental. So I, I think, you know, we could, we can draft this and then ask that it be run by council in the town to see if they think it meets what we need to do.
I think that makes sense. I think you should take accessory out of your definition.
Yep.
So if we just strike the last words, and dwelling unit accessory, out of that paragraph and put the word and in the next to the last sentence, the word and between dwelling and dwelling unit residential, that does it.
Yeah, I think that'll do it. Yeah, because I think the confusion was, could they say it's an accessory?
Yeah, I agree. So what's the process when we, once we, like if we approve this is what we want to propose, does it then go to the select board?
Well, we probably send it to the consultant.
For legal consult, consultation first, you mean?
Oh, we can send it, thanks, Matt.
To North Star. Once we draw these up, they can do what he, if you, what he, what they did, they'll just...
Oh, okay. Yes, 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 yes.
They'll, they'll, we'll, we'll, right, we'll get it and then we'll send it to him. They'll draw it up for us and then, so we just put something on paper, get what we want and give it to them. They'll finalize, they'll put it together for us.
Okay.
We can present it. I think our deadline is February 4th. Um, we have, is our deadline.
I don't think it has to be finished by February 4th. We just need to know how many spaces on the warrant we need.
Yeah.
We have quite a few of these things to get drafted.
Well, I think, there might be a, I can't remember what it was. I had the thing on my desk, February 17th, it might go to the public or something like that, or goes to the selectmen. No?
Well, we should give our copies to the selectmen as soon as they're ready.
And that might be the February, there is a February 4th deadline.
Really, it's just spaces on the warrant that need to be determined in February. And then, I mean, we want to have the thing drafted and not like, oh, we're going to do something with such and such, but we don't have anything at all. But we should have it drafted. It doesn't have to be 100% in February.
Because we're going to have to schedule public hearings on it all too.
Yeah, I have a list of everything of what we actually, there's actual timelines that we have to meet. It's two in February, then there's some in March.
Yeah.
I can, I'll bring it at the next meeting and let you guys, get you guys all the copies so that we can have, know where we need to be at certain times.
So are we okay with that verbiage going to North Star at this point?
Yeah. And the point being, we take that definition and insert it and add tiny homes on the one land use chart, page 14.
They'll, they'll be checking to make sure it doesn't conflict with anything else.
Right. The, the purpose of sending stuff to North Star was for them to look it over and tell us if they see any problems with it, maybe compare it to what's being done in other towns. We don't know if we can do anything on marijuana.
So then on the land use chart, as far as I can tell, it would pretty much duplicate what we've got for a single-family dwelling. As you go across the, across the board. Permitted with CEO review in every zone except for resource protection.
So it'll be permitted in shoreline, everything like that too?
Well, if they have a vacant lot where they can put a single-family dwelling, they're allowed to put a tiny house instead. As long as we, as long as we're clear, it's clear it's not an accessory dwelling unit, which we have, it is clear because we have a separate definition of that. Yeah, I think that helps. And then, like you were saying, the marijuana thing, we don't have to do anything with that because we, we would have to allow these facilities in the town. So not having anything in there means they're not allowed. But I think, which is good because we have plenty of these things to go over.
So then we're left with one place. I don't know if you want to start that tonight or I know Jason said he needed some time.
Right. You want to, we'll pass on the rentals and try to...
I just got to get, like I said before, I just need to have clarification on all the, all the concerns that, and why we, what we feel that the current conditions or, yeah, what we need to do to address this moratorium, I guess, what are the concerns that they're not meeting, I guess, the conditions that they might not be meeting so that we need to put this in, we need to enact a moratorium, so... Right now I have road traffic, uh, volume of large vehicles, um, pollutants, uh, wear and tear on the roads, quality is, uh, water quality is possibly being compromised, concentration of the extraction pits in area, certain areas, um, possible, uh, implementing taxes, um, to help maintain the roads, noise, uh, different conditions for, for every extraction pits, trying to bring everything into one, um, dust pollution and wind erosion.
Some of those I don't think, while they're concerned...
They're concerned, but what fit...
Right. They don't fit the risk to public, risk to the public that can't be managed immediately. And I guess I would say one of those would be, for example,
Well, I was just, I was just writing down what you got, your concerns were while we were going and that's kind, now I need to put, what I'm going to put in this moratorium is what I need to know what you guys want me to put.
Right, so I think taxing should come out of, that is not a moratorium issue in my opinion and
Well, I suppose concentration.
The taxing is going towards the wear and tear on the roads, the taxing isn't to, for the, to line the pockets of the town, it's to, it's a, it's a.
These are road commissioners' pockets.
Widening the roads.
Yeah, it's to help maintain the abuse that is, it takes place by the cost of travel on, with the larger vehicles.
Placing pavement more often because you got heavy trucks using it.
There's a will series cost to add to anything.
Come on Will, I know how much you love this thing.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm not here to point out no trucks or nothing like that, but I mean, it is a trickle down effect, I mean, we have seen an increase in truck traffic, you know, in the last year and it's going to take install and I have a plan for the H road and yeah, the ten foot lanes aren't doing it no more, we're going to start, you know, building our roads to accommodate all these, all these pits that we have up there and I think Jason and might even hit it on the head, I said this a month and a half ago, we should pull all these pits in and talk about the truck traffic and you know, I ain't going to sit here and say nothing about the selectmen, but it ain't going nowhere, I think that's where we need to start. And I personally think your next meeting, you need to call them all in and listen, these are their concerns, can we do something about it now? You know, we get newer pits opening up, there is other pits they have, they can only haul so many loads a day, I think it needs to be fair across the board. I mean, it's too much, oh, he can start here, he can start there, you know, it needs to be, it needs to be fair across the board, so that's all I have.
So do you think that allowing more pits increases the damage to the road and increases the safety concerns on the road? Or do you not think that?
Oh, sure, I mean, we open up another pit, I mean, there's what, six of them up, five, six of them up here now? And, I mean, yeah, there's trucks on the road every single day. And I'm going to point it out too, I mean, I'm just as guilty, I got trucks on that road every single day for my business, so I'm not going to point myself out, so I go right there making the damage, so, but you know, we're just, there's just a lot going on at once and.
Well, we had, just in the last twelve months, we had, you know, we talked about concentration in certain areas, well, just in the last month, we've had, we had one pit on the H road that was active pretty much, that was just ongoing. And then two more came in and they're just, and those guys are now active. So that truck traffic has, you know, gone from one pit that was moving gravel to, to now three. And they're constantly trucking and they're allowed to do it, it's just, it's just hard for the roads, the residents, safety.
I mean, I know there was a concern for the truck traffic and I think, I mean, I follow all the trucks and I mean, they're, I mean, you got one or two, you know, that might go a little bit, but most of the time they're, they're just kind of poking along, so I think we're headed in the right direction, but, you know, but no, there is, it's trickle down effect to everything, so. And the other thing too is that all the trucks we have here, they go on the other side of the road getting to the after, so you gotta keep that in mind, you know, they go over the Sanborn Road, over the county road. You're driving over the county road, you're going to meet a truck on the county road every single time you go over it, so, I mean, keep that in mind too, you know, just not this side of town, you get the other side of town if they, I mean, there's no.
Milton put the new, no through trucking, but who's going to follow it, they gotta enforce it on their end.
Oh, sure, I mean, that's a, yeah, that's a thing, we're gonna send out to chase trucks down, you know, that's what I.
No one wants DOT, it's not a good time with them, so we won't have them come around.
But that's all I have, so.
So all, all these trucks that are going over the roads, I didn't quite catch everything that you just said about county road. You said they were going out of state?
Well, yeah, I mean, you got pits there that they're out of state pit, I mean, they don't, they're not staying in the state domain, you know, they haul material, you know, to.
To mass.
You know, where they, they go wherever they gotta go and they leave from here, they go down Sanborn Road, go on the county road, Fox's Ridge and they had the rest of the after, I mean.
Yeah, where does Quikrete usually take their place, their stuff?
Our stuff goes out one oh nine.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Man, you got, you got two pits out there that go down Sanborn Road, Milton Mills Road to the county road and.
Well, they come down by turn, they actually turn on the front street.
Yeah. Yeah, I almost got hit by that guy.
That guy rolled a truck over, I may complain influential about that. He can't start till seven o'clock in the morning, that truck was rolled over before six o'clock in the morning.
Well, yeah, they're coming by my house at probably about five forty-five. I can tell you that because I'm up, then I hear them.
I mean, it's good for me not to start till seven, I'm on a state road, this guy's on a common road, starting at five o'clock in the morning loading trucks. They're going down the road and they're in my town, if I went came to work time in the turn there, that truck rolled over in a top of me. You know, and that was my concern, I called my selectmen about it because they're coming across the front street.
Right.
You know, and he got a whole windshield off, you know, I mean, it's not just the people that live in this town, it affects, it affects the people that live in the next common road as well.
And unfortunately, it's affecting the guys that are doing it correctly.
So, you know, that's why if we get all these guys together and we all talk about it and we can all come to common ground and then put it in their condition to use and update everything and have everybody agree upon it, you know.
Yeah, we're not trying to shut you guys down by any means, we're just, we're trying to get a handle on everything that's going on because there's been extensive amount of, or a growth for this extraction in this area and.
That's what, similar to what Jason just said, I want to say. I think it's, it's not about shutting anything down or putting anyone out of business or restricting anything that's been done, I think it's about recognizing we have some problems, we have some concerns, let's not multiply them by making them even bigger. You know, those that are already in existence, nothing's going to change. And we can work together to see what we can create, you know, to eliminate or reduce some of these problems, but I think the intent is for now, let's not expand an already existing problem till we get a better grip on it, how to manage it and do that together.
Everybody's concerned about safety, it's a number one concern.
Absolutely.
I, I'd hate to see something like they did in my little town of Stratton where they wouldn't put in a stoplight until they had so many deaths at that intersection.
Pretty much standard.
That, that is dumb reasoning.
I mean, from the rolling on the front street, taking that corner from Milton Mills Road on the front street, that's, you know.
They were out measuring the difference in one oh nine the other day. Right down from my house, you know, they put a stick across and looking at the grooves in the road, which is caused by heavy trucks, but.
You know, and, and our trucks are updating, they have cameras in our trucks, they're pointing out of the trucks, they're pointing at the drivers. If our drivers do something wrong, they don't stop at a stop sign, if they go over the yellow line, they call it in the office as soon as they get back to where they're going. You know, so our trucks, seriously, there's some of the safety trucks on the road today, and you see a Quikrete truck and they go over the speed limit, they're covered, they call it in the office, it'll be fired at their speed, I mean, it's a whole thing we go through with our truck drivers to make sure. Now, the outside contractors that come in and buy from us, you know, I can't control what they have, but we also, as mine operators under M Shaw, I'm responsible if somebody comes into my pit with a truck that's not road ready. So if it's, the brakes aren't adjusted right, or if the lights aren't working on the truck, this, that, and the other, I can be fine for that. So it is in my best interest to make sure we have people that are coming into our pits, vehicles that are suited for the road. Because at the end of the day, we're responsible.
Yeah, the biggest problem I've seen with truck drivers is the ones who get paid for the amount of loads they can deliver in a day. You know, so they're in a hurry. They're not, they're not the ones out just making a load, getting paid by the load, not how many loads, but. Yeah, I've been up and down H road and most truckers I've, I've passed are pretty good about getting over it, about speeding.
We gotta stay on task.
All right, so
back to the concerns, so what are we, the moratorium, what, you were saying to get rid of something, some things, but taxes, but.
Yeah, I think, um, maybe I misunderstood the intent.
No, it wasn't like property taxes or anything like that where it would benefit.
Anybody but.
Yeah, this is, this is to, like a duty tax, I don't really know the right verbiage.
Impact fee.
Yeah, impact fees and stuff like that, yeah. It's not, I guess a tax is the wrong word, uh, but yeah, fees, whether it becomes to, I don't know where they're, where we're going to go with that one. I don't, I'm not even going to throw in any suggestions to you, I don't want to get anybody all riled up. But yeah, no, that's just to help maintain the roads that we have, that, these that have been heavily traveled. That's not, not to go in the pockets of the town in that, in that way, you know. So does anybody else have any more that they would like to add that, that their concerns? Or, or why we can't meet these conditions throughout, uh, with just the conditions that we have is pretty much, I guess, what it really comes down to is. So why can't we, why can't we just use our conditional use application? So why do we need the moratorium? That's what I'm looking for as well, all these, you know.
You still haven't got a handle on the amount of increase in truck traffic, period. That means every pit brings more trucks, man, more trucks, and pretty much they're using the same roads to get in and out. To me, that's the biggest issue, because it won't take long for H road to be chiller into the point where you're going to have to redo it anyway.
Yeah, you can't tell, you can't tell these guys that they can't travel a certain road though.
You know, ten wheels passing each other on these highways, there's kids down these roads. I think the biggest concern we got here is we don't have a handle on the safety issue of this much heavy.
We have the H road, you have one way in, one way out, that they have to use that road, so you can't tell them that they can't use it.
Yeah.
Just to handle the width of the trucks.
But, but we don't have a.
The roads, the interest itself.
And you, once you open up a pit, you can't stop the traffic because we can't stop them from using it. But we can stop it now until we figure out what to do with H road, you know.
And stop the increase. So that falls down under road traffic and volume of large vehicles.
Safety.
Yep.
Yeah. Safety being the top concern, I think, because increase in heavy truck traffic.
Would ensure compliance?
What was that, compliance?
Ensure compliance, would that fit into this at all? Because it seems to be everybody's calling your office and you're having to deal with people that aren't being compliant with the conditions, conditional use permits?
Well, I.
Just asking.
What we don't have in our ordinance right now, which we really should do something about is if conditions continuously are broken, I, I can't do anything, I still can't do anything about it, it's just a slap on the wrist, we take them to court. I can't revoke the conditions, I can't do anything like that, I feel that if, if that's where you want to go, you want to talk about that, then if, if they're not complying with their conditional uses and it's a repeat offenders, um, there's no reason why they should continue to have their conditions. So I don't know if that's where you're going with that one, but.
Something that you can do.
Yeah, right now, I can't do much other than find them and, and if they keep undoing it, then you take them to court, but.
Well, that's our major mechanism, they're infracting the ordinance and you, I don't know what the fine is, it's in here somewhere, but.
Yeah, there's no set fine, it's pretty much, it's you, it gives you a maximum of what you want to do. It's like a twenty-five hundred dollars a day or something, I can't even remember what it was.
It's up to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's a sliding.
It, it's what, it's whatever, you know, whatever I want to, or I don't even know if it goes to me or the select, I'm not really sure who that, I haven't had to assess fines, I don't want to.
But that is our mechanism.
Yeah, select.
Right, no, for sure, um, but but for some of these places, you know, that's just a slap on, that's a, that doesn't even affect them.
Shutting, shutting them down is about the only way that it really gets their attention, but if you can't do that without a legal battle, then it's not.
Well, it has to be unjust, you can't just say, oh, taking your commissions away. I don't, I don't even know, I'm just, whatever.
So basically, the current
Want to call a leave.
Current consequences of conditional use violations are inadequate to ensure compliance.
Yeah, I don't know if that's going on, that's not going on the, that's not for the moratorium though, I don't think, or is.
Well, I, I think it is valid because that explains why we can't control it by conditional use. If we give more conditional use approvals and there's no consequence that seems to, it's not, this is directed at increasing the number of pits. Not directed at existing pits. It explains why we need something to happen now versus, well, we can work on this over the next year or two.
I'll talk to the selectmen and see what they want to do about, um, um, meeting with the planning board and, or the selectmen with, um, the mining foremans, owners, whatever they want to do, see what they want to go with that too, because I know that's, that would help, uh, give people a good idea of what's going on, but.
Jason, we have to have a town hearing.
For, for the moratorium?
Yep.
Oh, yes, yeah, the town votes for.
That might be a forum for people to come and express their views.
I think these two gentlemen here want to come and work with us to get a common ground, a great, tight deal, is what I'm getting this thing.
I think, I, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
That makes good sense, I mean, right now we got one side of the story.
Well, and it's a common interest, I'm sure that for those of you that operate and obey the laws, you want everyone else to be held to the same standard, it's not fair.
That's what I'm saying, I hear.
Right, so that's, we're not, we're not adversaries on that.
It's at six o'clock in the morning, six thirty in the morning, because we have a neighbor and we have trucks that come in, we don't load them, they don't leave till after seven o'clock. That's in our condition, we can't start. But instead of having trucks lined up on one oh nine, they're sitting in our yard waiting to get loaded. We have a neighbor that's, she sits out there and takes pictures, actually she causes more of a hazard doing what she's doing, you know. But he's had in here at very early in the morning, he's not a happy guy, but but he's, he's, he's there, you know, and, and, I mean, he sees what's going on and again, we can all probably do better, even as mine operators in the town, you know, we can get a talk going between all of us and figure it out. What we can do to make it better for the residents, but as you said, it's a thousand more people moving to town. There's a thousand more houses being built or whatever they're doing, they need gravel, they need concrete, they need work done to their homes, where do you think they're getting it from? You know, if you want to impose a tax on us to, for the roads, we're going to have to charge more for the material that's going to the homeowners in town. So that increase, you increase on us, we increase on them, that's how that works. You know, so you guys got to look at it at that point too. You know, maybe the mine operators, the bigger mine operators might donate material for helping widen the roads.
Yeah.
I mean, you can talk about that, you know.
My concerns, I mean, I can't speak for anyone else, my concerns are really more going forward, not looking at these people need to pay more the existing, to me, it's like if somebody wanted to put in a shopping center somewhere, they, because it's new, it's another burden, they need to pay for the traffic light that's necessitated by that. Cost of doing business going forward, not backwards, not at the existing businesses. But if we, if we add more pits and so forth, it's, it's already, we already have problems, we already have roads that are taxed, burdened. We don't want to increase it until we are better prepared. Again, that's just my opinion, but I, I don't want people to think that, you know, it's like we're trying to get rid of gravel pits in Acton and, I mean, it's a whole industry here, it's.
It's, there's evidence of that around town.
That would, that would hurt, that would hurt everybody, you know, so that's not.
The problem is when the old pits never got revegetated properly and whatnot, and, you know, everything gets, it's supposed to be stayed on site, but it gets hauled out and then it just goes away forever. Forever changes the landscape too, you know, so I think that's kind of, you know, just off that public hearing, some of the concerns that were brought to us by the people, you know. And I'm sure you get it, you know, we, you, that's where you make your money from, so you gotta.
In a gravel pit, the first thing to go is the topsoil.
Yeah, and then.
It's the most money for it.
Right, and it's gone for good.
All right.
But it's supposed to stay on site.
Now, I'm not in the market for topsoil, we don't sell topsoil, that's not our game. I got all the topsoil still on my site, but there's other pits, it's the first. Now, I'm not in the market for topsoil, we don't sell topsoil, that's not our game, I got all the topsoil still on my site, but if there's other pits, it's the first thing that goes, topsoil.
Yeah, and the one thing they need to revegetate.
DEP has, you know, laws and standards, you know, about reclaiming and whatnot, that, you know, that they are in effect, and they definitely enforce that.
You look at your pit, it's a perfect example, though, was that ever reclaimed, was that ever revegetated? You bought the pit, you bought the pit.
I, I bought it, I don't think it had been touched in a while.
Right.
I'm saying, but the topsoil is still there, though.
So reclamation should be on that list.
Couple along, along Grady's Lake, was it, uh?
That is a hazard.
Not Grady, no, was it Grady, old pits in there?
Yeah.
Like Lakeside Drive?
Yeah, Lakeside Drive, it never got revegetated, they've been there, same way from, I, I've been a kid, you know.
So, so some of those DEP rules, you know, they're, they're more than those, when those pits were probably, you know, deleted.
Right.
So they were never, you know, held to it. I mean, the DEP guy comes and walks the whole property line when he comes, he's there for half a day, looking at us. And, you know, remember the withdrawal last year, that's in your thumb, you threw a little bit of beer in there. And we go, the guy took them in hydro seats for me, you know, and tried to hold the dust down, and stuff like that, and clothes. You know, it's pretty much a perk.
I think, the, you know, the dust.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
A problem even before you reclaim, to be honest, it goes into the stream, sediment, and all that stuff, too, it settles the, the, the fisheries. You, you have to understand that, and, so that's kind of.
There's things we can do.
Here, vacation, and they like to fish into whatever, you know, you attack, but that happens, then they're not gonna come anymore. So, you have to look at it as that way, too.
Should erosion control go on that list?
I have, um, well, I have, um, I'll put erosion control, but I do, I have like dust pollution and wind erosion.
Erosion control measures?
Well, I mean, we should be, uh, page fifty-three, fifty-four, it's all in there under performance standards. There isn't a lot about wind erosion in there, like I said, but, there is, um, I mean, number four is topsoil alone, and it's all in there, we have the purview to. To make sure that these smaller pits that aren't bonded with DEP bond with us for revegetation, so that if they leave the operation without revegetating, the town has that escrow to fix it. Um, it's pretty standard. We have, I mean, it's, a lot of, a lot of this stuff is in the ordinance, um, I just feel like.
I think, I think we were talking about being able to enforce it.
Well, I mean, it, we have that enforcement in here, too, what you do, like, um, under conditional use, um.
I think for some people.
Six point six, point three, point eight, I mean, it's in the ordinance, I don't know what.
What page, Kevin?
Uh, eighty-nine, this I'm talking about for, uh, just one, one citation about violations.
Um, yeah, the performance guarantees, and.
Right above that, conditions attached to conditional uses, the third line, violation of any of these conditions shall be a violation of this ordinance.
Right, but I think for some people, paying that fine, it's just, it's just the cost of doing business, for them, which is a drop in the bucket.
Yes, well.
Not really, for some people. And that, I think that that's why maybe we should put that on the list. I think that's what we were.
Enforcement issue was not very effective, shutting them down is wasn't effective.
Is there anything on here that you wanted to add, here, sureties, deed restrictions, restrictive covenants? Is there anything there that looks hazardous that we could add to this?
You're under, uh, conditional uses right now?
And conditions attached to conditional uses, six, six, three, eight, and you were talking about that sentence. Such conditions may include, but are not limited to.
It just says that the violation of any of these conditions that we put forward is a violation of the ordinance, in which case the, it's, it comes down to the code officer actually enacting and finding. To uphold the condition.
Right.
And how, how we beef that up, I mean, I.
But as we just found out, the condition, the enforcement is not effective.
Well.
Didn't you just say it's.
So I'm gonna strike water quality from here, because it tells us right in here that we can, in evaluating each application, the board may request the assistance of county soil and water conservation district. So we can, we can make sure that.
We have the purview to do all these, we're talking.
Well, that's what I, that's kind of.
It's just the familiarity of the board with the ordinance, and, and that we need to actually come up with these things on our own, it's not, not everything is just written down. In the ordinance for us to read verbatim, it's like, they need a hydrological assessment, because they're, they have X, Y, and Z conditions. We, through experience of dealing with these things in the past, need to be able to come up with what conditions would improve the site, and that's kind of why we do have. A variation of conditions across the board, depending on the, the location and the size of each extraction operation. It took me a long time to start to get familiar with what I could even do, but, that mean, a, a lot of these things that, that we're talking about, are in here, we just. They're just, it's, it's, it's as though that, you know, the town just doesn't choose to put their foot down, we have the purview to do it. I agree, you know.
When I mentioned the issue of water quality, I didn't mean on the site, I meant the concerns that people were raising last week. About how the dust and debris and so forth may affect the water bodies nearby, the lakes and so forth.
Yeah, I mean, that is.
There is a wind concern, as soon as you strip the soil from the top of something, and the wind blows, that stuff goes somewhere.
Yeah.
I mean, it rises up, it turns into dust, and it, where does it end up? On the bodies of water. And that does.
I hope you're gonna get you a sandy beach.
And that, that brings us back to revegetation, which will prevent so much dust, or at least as much as we could, and at the same time. We need someone to go and at least be looking at Google Earth, to look at these sites, and see if they are revegetating like they're supposed to be, because. Any of these smaller pits under five acres, it's the purview of the code officer to make sure they're staying up.
Well, I know Sanford's enacted, uh, they have drones now, or not, they don't, themselves, but they hire outside companies to come in with a drone, they can actually, that drone will. Shoot the photos, and they can actually tell you exactly how much is, uh, open, how much has been revegetated, all this other stuff, and it's something that we might wanna consider, um, at the expense of these pits.
I was reading through this copy you gave me from the Hancock Mine, their ordinance on mineral extraction, they had one thing in there that caught my eyes. Any, like, the topsoil that they strip out has to be seeded. Any piles of debris or anything like that has to have certain conditions where there, you know, you don't have this erosion problem in the, that kind of thing. So those little, those little kinds of things that, um, you know, you put in there to help control that kind of, or you got a piece of this pit that's not gonna be used for the next five years. Needs to be covered, seeded, or things like that, to take care of those erosion problems and things, but I don't know if you guys have a chance to look at this.
And we have, and we have that in our own ordinance, too, stockpiles right here, page fifty-three, number four. Topsoil alone shall be retained to cover all disturbed land areas, which shall be reseeded and stabilized with native vegetation, native behavior, additional topsoil alone shall be attained from offsite source if necessary. Any topsoil suitable for purpose of vegetation shall, to the extent required for estimation, be stripped from location of extraction operations and stockpiled for the use restoring the location after. Extraction operations have ceased, such stockpiles shall be protected from erosion. It's all right in there, it's just.
Again.
Again, somebody needs to go and say, hey, your, your pile of soil isn't seeded, and.
Well, it's also required.
It's not revegetated, I mean, it's said right here, it's in there, we could, somebody could go and find them if it wasn't like that, and we, that's not what we're doing.
There's also requirements for yearly site, site visits and things like that, so maybe it's something else we should follow up that.
Right, that's true, we could do, we could do more site logs.
We had a site walk the other day for this, okay, one year from now, we do know, you know, that's part of our inspection, compliance process. I know the state comes down and they inspected certain things, but they're not gonna be so concerned with our ordinance as, as they.
And it's, that's only if they're of a certain scale.
Right, and, but they're more concerned with the state regulations, and then meeting all that, than our.
If they're not following, that's, that's for the office, that's code enforcement office, not, it's not the planning board to, to be dealing with any kind of violations you're, you know.
No, I didn't mean deal with violations, but to be able to, I mean, we had a site walk the other day that uncovered something. That's, wouldn't have been ordinary to have been found if you guys hadn't gone out there and walked around.
Right.
So maybe one of the concerns that do relate to public safety is the, whether we have adequate resources for both code enforcement and law enforcement. Because people talk about that all the time, in terms of road safety, people speeding and so forth, and there's, there's nobody there.
Yeah, good luck with that one.
Well, it supports.
Well, we.
The basis for moratorium.
We can't even get, uh, we can't even get a contract sheriff right now, deputy.
I know.
So, I mean.
Right, so we're gonna increase traffic during these conditions, or maybe hold back a little?
I don't know what to do with that.
Wild, wild west.
Exactly.
Start carrying around your six shooter.
So, wait.
I think we got it.
I got it.
I got your drone problem taken care of, I got two of them at the house.
Do you feel like you have enough?
I have a good amount there, um.
Okay.
So we've got road safety, enforcement, and, and pretty much.
Environmental stuff.
Right.
I think road traffic is one of, is probably one of our biggest things, and, and concentration of, of the, of the pits, I think.
Especially considering what you have here, is only so many ways in and out, you go, what, two roads, maybe? And looking at these maps, there's only like two main roads to get them out of there. H being the most popular one right now, but West Shore Drive over there, it looks like it's kinda getting, maybe used.
So for next time, what do we have more for the ordinances? We have, we did the tiny house one, what else do we have, we had two more that we had on our agenda.
We're not doing anything with marijuana.
No, there was, um, some definitions that we were doing.
Oh, rentals, we need to.
And rentals, yeah, that was the one that you guys have been working on for a while.
This one says mixed use.
I got, no, mixed use is, I believe North Star's got right here, something right here for me.
Yeah, right, well, we should look that over, so.
Yeah, and, oh, for sure.
Discuss it and see if we agree.
Right. And, like, they'll be here, they're on the agenda for, for next week, um, for an hour, I think. I have them coming in from six to seven, and then, well, we are dealing with, uh, conditional use after that. I think the, the agenda's, the agenda's up right now, I believe.
For me. You want a motion?
Yeah.
I move me adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
You can second.
I will second that.
All of you.